Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled city council meeting. It is Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, 6:00 PM. And I am going to call this meeting to order. We will start this evening with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise and join me.
The Pledge of Allegiance applies in the United States of America to the Republic which stands in one issue under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll ask the city clerk to call roll.
Barbara Beinum?
Present.
Jay David Reed?
Present.
Doug Glassbell?
Present.
Ed Ulliberry?
Here.
Councilmember Dave Frank is absent. All other councillors are present.
Thank you very much. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then the first thing on our agenda tonight is kind of fun. It is a proclamation in honor of Park and Recreation Month. And I'll ask Jeremy Master, the Recreation Manager for the Montrose Recreation District, to join me up front to receive the proclamation. This is a proclamation for Park and Recreation Month, June 2023. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including that served by the Montrose Recreation District in the City of Montrose. And whereas parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the Montrose Recreation District Board of Directors has designated July as Park and Recreation Month. And whereas the Montrose City Council recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2023 as Park and Recreation Month in the City of Montrose.
Well, thank you for supporting and recognizing. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for supporting and recognizing Park and Recreation Month. And also, in that support, we hope to see you and invite the council and the community to a block party on Thursday, 5:30 to 8:30. It will highlight a lot of the businesses and the development at Colorado Outdoors. But first and foremost, it's a community event, free to the public, with live music and kids and family activities, and everything that Parks and Recreation Month is about. And so, thank you.
And that'll be an opportunity to check out the FlexRec Center.
Correct.
And it's right there along our beautiful Connect Trail.
Yes, on May 5th.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda tonight is the call for public comment for non-agenda items. So this would be the time during the meeting that if you want to address council for a couple of minutes about something that isn't an agenda item, this would be your opportunity. By a show of hands, is anyone here to make a public comment? Great, then I'm going to read the rest of the legal language that goes with public comment. The call for public comment agenda item is a time when members of the community may publicly voice their concerns. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please stay on topic and limit comments to three minutes. Also, be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to engage in discussion or debate. However, the city may respond when appropriate with you at a later time. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity, or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law. Okay, with that, would you please come forward? I think you were the only public comment that I saw. Come on forward to the podium, and please give us your name and your street, neighborhood, or subdivision, please.
Name's John D. Nelson, 3246 Connie Road 22, Montrose, Colorado, 81403. I'm president of the Board of Directors of All Points Transit. And unlike in the past, I'm not here to ask for anything. Most unusual. I want to thank the city and this council for continuing to support All Points Transit. Our Oktoberfest is coming up September 30th. I appreciate the donation, the sponsorship, both in kind and in cash, and continuous support for this operation since we've been in business since 1989. I also want to commend and thank Scott Murphy, the engineer, because we're eventually going to build a terminal, and it looks very much like it's going to be out at East Oak Grove and in the area of Woodgate. And unlike most engineers that I've ever met over my history, he communicates extremely well. And he's very helpful and has been very helpful to us in planning our little four-acre project. I just wanted to commend him and to thank the council for its continuous support. Thank you.
Thank you. We certainly are lucky here at the city to have great staff, and it is always great to hear the public talk about their interactions and the positive ways that our staff is able to help our community. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will go forward with our agenda tonight. Next on our agenda is item seven, and that is approval of minutes. And this is council consideration of the minutes of the June 20th, 2023 regular city council meeting. And the, yeah, those are the ones.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the June 20, 2023 regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Please go ahead and vote. Don't forget you need to save your vote. And that passes unanimously tonight. Next on our agenda is ordinance 2630. This is a first reading of ordinance 2630, updating Title I, Chapter II, General Provisions in Title I, Chapter 14, Municipal Court of the Official Code of the City of Montrose, repealing and replacing Title I, Chapter II, Section 3, 1-2-3, regarding general penalty, repealing and replacing Title I, Chapter 14, Section 4, 1-14-4, regarding sentencing, and repealing and replacing other code provisions to standardize cross-references in the official code of the City of Montrose regarding sentencing. And I will ask our Assistant City Attorneys Matt Magliaro and Chris Dowsey to give us the full information on this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, all members of the city council.
Can you make sure your mic's on? There we go.
Testing, testing, one, two.
Hang on, Greg's going to dump.
Mine is on, but there is no sound.
I think we're going to get some IT support here.
I can go to the podium if it helps.
Would you feel more comfortable, like you're in court, if you're at the podium?
Testing, testing, one, two.
Why don't you come to the podium?
There we go. That one works. All right, let's try that again. Good evening. I'm hearing a proposal that will affect six sections of the Montrose Municipal Code, specifically, two of them live in Title I. There are two separate provisions there, specifically MC 1-2-3, the general penalty provision, as well as MC 1-14-4, the general sentencing provision for the court. The bulk of the proposed changes are there, and the bulk of my comments to you will be on those. For the four others, two in Title V, one in Title VIII, and one in Title IX, the intent is to consolidate the sentencing provisions into the two aforementioned sections. When we started this project in legal, there were about 12 different penalty sections or provisions spread throughout the municipal code. The intent was to consolidate them into two for ease of reference, as well as ease on the court for advising properly defendants when they come into court, when this is a courtroom on Thursday. In addition to that, it will make changes to the extent desired by a future city council easier to accomplish. Proposal appears on pages 10 through 15 of your packet tonight. This was discussion item at a work session held June 19th, 2023. There have been no changes since that presentation to council. For the record, we've also had an interdepartmental meeting with the court regarding this proposal on May 16th, and the court has notice of the proposal at bar before you this evening. Executive summary, we would propose to change, let me back up a step. In the present code, we have a provision purporting to supersede the penalty statute for municipal courts that are statutory courts. That's in MC 1-14-2-B. That ordinance purports to supersede the statute. That said, our penalty section in MC 1-2-3 and MC 1-14-4 really have closely tracked the statutory state language for the fine amount penalty for adults. The General Assembly passed a bill called HB 191148. The intent of that was to make misdemeanors in this state immigration safe, so reduce the penalties for a class-one misdemeanor for up to a year in jail to 364 days. The proposal at bar would propose to mirror that for adults, for municipal ordinance violations. And we would, staff would recommend amendment for our code for consistency with that. For juveniles, the penalty section in state laws in CRS 192.5305, juveniles may only be held within, in custody within 48 hours. The statutory revision before you purports to limit the maximum detention to this period. It eliminates the 10-day reference in both sections of that code and adds language from one of the state statutes, 192.53054E. The fine amount for juveniles in state laws capped at $300, so that's why that appears there. I would note, this is consistent, the penalties for adults and for juveniles, with advisement practices of the Montrose Municipal Court of Judge Maxwell, before her Judge Greenacre. Also, as part of the work session packet, I had the advisement form that was commonly given out to defendants when they appear for court. That has the penalty sections that this ordinance would propose to put into our code. So it's intended to mirror what basically is already happening in Montrose Municipal Court every Thursday. I can go through item by item in MC 1-14-4 if the council would like, or maybe it'd be best to just open up for questions at this point, since it was pretty exhaustively covered in work session.
It was. We did discuss it in work session, so I think going straight to questions, if you're ready, if there are any, we could do that.
I am. May it please the court, so.
Any questions about this? We did talk about it in work session and all the reasons that we're making these changes. Doesn't look like we have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would hold a hearing, because this is a ordinance, and it's the first reading, so I will open a hearing on this and accept any public comment. Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to pass ordinance 2630 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Please go ahead and vote electronically. And that passes unanimously. Wait, why does it say five? Ed voted twice. Can we make sure the official record reflects a four-o vote? Okay, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda tonight is a Woodgate East Oak Grove Development Agreement. I believe that this is the one, Mayor Protem, that you're going to excuse yourself on.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself of consideration of this matter.
Okay, if you'll step outside, we'll get you inward finished. We'll get, we'll get him back, don't worry. Okay, we have before us on our agenda tonight, council consideration of the Woodgate East Oak Grove Development Agreement to include the purchase of rights-of-way easements and a residential structure at a cost of $240,500. And staff, city engineer Scott Murphy is going to tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So usually my spiels aren't too long, but this one's got a lot of layers to it, so I'll pause throughout to answer any questions as they come up. So feel free to interrupt or chime in as we go. So starting out with kind of an overview of the area, this is a little hard to see, but this is East Oak Grove here, Townsend, and you can kind of see Woodgate at the bottom of the picture here. So some of the traffic challenges at this area is experienced over the years. You know, before the Woodgate realignment, we had a pretty bad bottleneck on Townsend here. And then these commercial centers here, so this is Murdochs, you have a couple high-density residential apartments, Big Five, Office Depot, those complexes here, the Penn Mall, all, you know, directly access Townsend without any alternates to get to a signal. So as that worked back in the day, but as traffic volumes in this reaches, I think they're up around over 25,000 vehicles per day, it gets pretty challenging to hang a left out of these areas. A lot of people, because of that, are doing U-turns or going through Montrose Drive, a lot of kind of, yeah, just secondary things that pop up because of those issues. In response to that, the city is, in previous comp plans, the current comp plan, CDOTs, access control plans, which control the access points for Townsend, but also make recommendations for alternate baggage roads and concentration of accesses. All have envisioned the Woodgate realignment, which was finished in 2022, and also envisioned a baggage road, which would get, provide some relief to these commercial centers to be able to get out either to, you know, Niagara or East Oak Grove, so that they could get to a signal to hang a left on Townsend. So those have all been in the works for a long time. We moved forward with the realignment project. That, again, remained a city priority for a decade-plus, but it was, had several different parcels associated with it, and it was a challenging land acquisition that they could never kind of, never break through on. Fortunately, we were able to get there through a partnership on the southern reach and get that completed. And so the Woodgate realignment is done and in place and open to the public and is seeing a lot of traffic, seeing a lot of use on it. And people, the feedback is generally positive. People are excited that they don't have to go to Townsend. If you're coming down Oak Grove, you can avoid it. When we studied that, or when we did the design of that Woodgate realignment, that included a lot of traffic studies that identified, you know, initially you can get by without it, but not too long after opening, we would need to do a roundabout at that intersection. So that has been in the works for, since the beginning of that design. At the time of the Woodgate realignment, we had talked to the owners on the north side, so zooming in here, you can see that around about, we were able to secure the right-of-way on these two sides. But on the north side, the owners at the time, we approached them to try and purchase the land to make that happen, to see if you could do it all as one. Between that and its cost of the roundabout itself, we elected to construct the realignment only, because that owner was not interested in selling land at that time. We were not at a point where we would want to pursue eminent domain. Fast forward to now, we have new landowners. Dean McColl is here to join, or to join us. He's one of five or six different owners on these parcels, and he kind of represents the group. And we've been working with them. They're a very different mindset. They would like to see this area developed and revitalized. They own the Penn Mall as well and see a lot of great opportunity in this area. Personally, from a city, we love infill projects, where land that's surrounded by infrastructure in the core of the city, we don't like it to see, like, we don't like to see it sit vacant. We like to see, you know, as a great opportunities, a lot of the investments have been made in infrastructure, and they see that as well. So this is an excellent place to solve some traffic problems, see some redevelopment, and in this case, also support All Points Transit. So Dean McColl and his group have been working with, and thanks, John, for joining us from the All Points Board, working with All Points, knowing that they've needed a place to land that's centrally located. And as John can tell you, finding a parcel of land large enough for a transit center that's, has infrastructure and is accessible and in the middle of town is kind of a unicorn. So, you know, we always say we like two fers and three fers. This is probably a fourfer, when you throw in what this can mean for All Points and what All Points means for our community. So, you know, with everyone on board, we've started talking about what could happen at this intersection and when. That's kind of led us to go into this development agreement with, with the owners. So I will change screens here to kind of an overview. So this is kind of similar zoom in of this area. So the two parcels that we're working with Dean and his team on are, were labeled as Parcels 1 and 2 in the development agreement. For reference, Walgreens is right here. This one is currently in the city limits, this one is not. So the first piece in this would be annexation and zoning to bring those in, so that we can do a lot of the land work we need to do. And so they are interested in, again, working with us to secure the right-of-way needed for the roundabout. As you can see here, there's a house right on the corner that would need to be relocated. So part of this would be compensating for the structure itself, compensating for the right-of-way needed for the roundabout. The baggage road right-of-way would be dedicated. It's supportive and really opens up this area for development. And so the, instead of us purchasing that right-of-way, they would, after compensation for the roundabout right-of-way and the, and the structure, they have agreed to dedicate this right-of-way as part of this agreement. We didn't want a baggage road to nowhere, so we've also been talking to the Property Owners Association of the Marketplace Box Stores here to make sure that, you know, this is the first step of a multi-step process to continue marching that baggage road north. Ideally, we would like to get to at least Encanto, which is the road just south of Murdochs, and that provides a lot of relief for this area. You know, longer range, if we can march, continue marching north, get to Church Street, that would be great. And maybe even Montrose Drive at some point, depending on how that area develops. We're not going that far north yet. Right now, we're focused on the reach between East Oak Grove and Encanto. The development agreement before you gets us secured up to the Marketplace Stores, but we have been, again, meeting with the Marketplace Stores owners, and they're verbally on board, and we would look to work on securing that one next, should this be approved tonight. So with that, going into the development agreements, or before I dive into the development agreement itself, any questions on the project drivers and background so far? The agreement itself, so this is pretty similar to the Woodgate realignment agreement that we had. So it helps us meet our infrastructure needs through construction of the roundabout, securing the rights-of-way, and bringing the mainline utilities so they're available at the site there. And then it kind of, with that seat planted, it leaves the remainder to be developed and let the private side do their thing on each side of it. Again, part of that is All Points there. Of this eastern lot, there are about half of its acreage, around 4.1 acres, I think something to that effect. And so we would help them with the annexation and zoning of this property. So that'll go through standard city processes to the Planning Commission and ultimately council, purchase the rights-of-way, like I had mentioned, and then construct the Woodgate Roundabout, which is something that we would, regardless of what's going on in this parcel, we, again, that's a near-term capital priority for the city, has been since the realignment project. So, you know, that's something we would want to do either way. This helps create a mechanism to do that. And then, again, that property, we were compensating just for the structure itself, kind of its estimated value. And again, we would do any asbestos abatement necessary, and then, because we never like to demolish a house, we have initially talked to homeowners who say it is a very good candidate to be relocated. So then they would kind of get first right to put it wherever they want to through using a house mover that would go out to bid, and then if, for whatever reason, it can't be relocated, if there's structural issues or something to that effect, it would have to be demolished, and that would be at our cost. And then we would also assist with preparation of the general subdivision application. So in doing the baggage road and the roundabout projects, we end up surveying and designing and toppling everything. It's, it's really a small add for us to help parse up the parcel as they need to then facilitate the private development. Once that's done, they run with it. Any, you know, private infrastructure needed to support the developments would be on them, and then obviously any site development, development of those lots remains a private obligation. So we're kind of doing, meeting our infrastructure needs and then setting it up as a catalyst to, to prime them for development. So that's where kind of the win-win part comes in. The financial side of it, so the baggage road roundabouts estimate to be about three and a half million. Larger picture capitals schedule, we are looking to get the 6,700 extension open this fall, which will be used as a good detour for when we do the Niagara Hillcrest Roundabout, starting in the winter, or, yeah, first part of 2024. Once that's completed, we then look to go to this one. We don't want to do them all at once. For expenditure reasons, it's a lot to bite off at once, but also we don't want detours on top of detours. So we want to pace out or spread out our projects. It sets us up well for, it sounds like, All Points schedule, so that we'd be in slightly ahead or hitting the finish line about the same time as what they're looking to do for the new transit center. Assuming all of that goes through, there's still some federal pieces they got to go through and whatnot, but we would, the first piece of that, we would like to start on the design, because that's all kind of hinges on getting everything set up, so that we can get the rights-of-way and so that we can get everything lined up, so we're not holding up All Points. So we would bring that forward as a contract recommendation. We've already advertised for that, and we are ready to make a recommendation. So that would be at the first work session for August, and then approval mid-August. And then the court, so that'd be a partial expenditure in 2023, and then the larger expenditure for construction would be split between 2024 and 2025 budgets, because it wouldn't be open until the spring of 2025. Having said this, for the portions right now, they aren't budgeted. This is kind of a unique opportunity that came up post-budget, and then as a general practice, we also generally don't budget for land acquisitions, because we don't, a lot of times their timing is uncertain. Again, this was, in this, we didn't know we were going to get so lucky and get this pursued this year. So it's a great opportunity, and, but generally, I, we wouldn't even drop those in our budget if we didn't know we were going to go after them. Makes negotiation hard if they know what your number is to start, so. And I think with that, happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure our guests would too.
Scott, excuse me. What is this orange with yellow?
Oh, I clicked on the...
What is that? That's not part of this.
This is the parcel that would be annexed and zoned. So let me go back to the other drawing.
Is that all part of the existing, the lots 1 and 2?
Yep, yep. So what you see here is, what was highlighted right there is what's kind of parcel 2 on this drawing, if you can kind of see the map.
No, what was highlighted was the one to the east, Scott.
Oh, sorry. Oh, whoops. Yep, wrong square, littler square. Yeah, I think I just clicked it accidentally. Yeah, so this is the, it's a better zoomed-in version of the...
That other square that was on the screen during the whole presentation had nothing to do with this project.
Correct. Yep, yep, sorry.
It's okay, I just don't...
I grabbed the wrong square.
I just want to make sure anyone that's tuning in is in, yeah.
And then this one here is going to be divided in, in two parcels, right?
Yes, All Points is eyeing this area right here.
Right.
And then the remainder, they're eyeing commercial development here and likely residential development on this eastern side.
Okay, because I was a little concerned that we were taking acres and acres of land and having to pay for all the infrastructure, and I'm sitting there thinking, well, so that the developers can do whatever they want to do. But I'm looking at something different now, so...
Yes, going back to this screen, the back-of-the-road would come up to here, so the, you know, city infrastructure that would be constructed, if committed through the Development Agreement, would be the back-of-the-road up to this Penn Mall entrance. They kind of have plans to redevelop this area and maybe center more towards this Woodgate area, given that it'll be a pretty bustling area. So that, the back-of-the-road up here and then the roundabout itself.
There's no additional infrastructure that the city is currently considering paying for on the internal piece of that big lot? Like between, if it gets divided into lots two, three, four, and five, we aren't considering paying for any infrastructure in the middle of that lot right now?
Correct. There may be a, you know, trunk, in order to get stubs, at least a stub to the back area, there may be a sanitary sewer trunk that goes east-west along the south end here, but nothing specific to the buildings or anything. It's really just getting them the core city infrastructure, which are water and sewer and storm available. We don't like to cut up our new roads after the fact.
Right. So can you kind of point to where the water, sewer, storm infrastructure would be? Would it be right alongside the road, or are we talking about bringing it all across that property?
Most of them, so the core trunk lines would come down, so sewer has to go all the way back to here.
Okay.
Because of grade. So sewer would come down East Oak Grove, up here, and then just likely probably stub out to All Points, to be designed, but at conceptual level, stubbed out here. And then if All Points is going to develop, we want to make sure that that doesn't get blocked. So we'd probably have an easement and a sewer stub that goes across at least to here. So it just gets that back area available. Again, that'll be dependent on grades. And yeah, and then water is already available. We replaced it when we did East Oak Grove. So all of that, there wouldn't need to be a stub here. They can grab it here, and then probably All Points will probably grab it from here as well. Depending on what stub, if we, if this lot has a back area here, we may bring a small stub up to the driveway and then just stub back just to get it out of the road.
Okay.
But anything beyond that would remain on the private side.
Is that roundabout size consistent with some of the other roundabouts around town? I mean, just because we don't have a, I mean, I know there's a scale on there somewhere.
It's a, it's a medium one. So Sunnyside is our, Sunnyside and I think North Nine to the same, they're our smallest 120-foot diameter. This one, we're looking at 130.
Okay.
Get a little larger volume, and we have the right-of-way. So places that have driven the constraint are, if there's right-of-way constraints or a skew. So like Miami's our largest, I think it's 150, 150-foot diameter. That was because of the skew. So this is kind of between the two.
That exactly answers my question.
That question was asked yesterday, so that's why those numbers are fresh.
Any other questions from Council?
I was just looking at the public utility easements on the side where the house is And so that cuts into the housing, and that's the reason why we're...
Yeah, and due to grade, due to grade there, the road's a little bit higher than the lot there. So even without that easement, if we, even if we didn't put any utilities in there, we reserve those utility easements just because we never know where dry utilities may need to run. But even if there were no utilities that went in there, just the slope coming off the road would leave that house, and its proximity to the roundabout would leave it pretty inaccessible. And then in working with the owners, you know, given how this area is developed, a lot better use of that land as a commercial use now that we have Woodgate realignment and the back-of-the-road in place. It's a really ripe, great place to develop a commercial property and the zoning there to support it, so.
So our purchase of that structure, does that then, and I think you said this, but I want to make sure I understand. So we're, we would, through this Development Agreement, we would be purchasing that structure, and then it's our responsibility to move, hopefully move it, mitigate any asbestos, and then move it, and worst-case scenario, abate the asbestos and then pay to demolish it?
Yep. So essentially, we're saying, you know, that structure has to go away. A lot of times, the moving, so realignment is a good example, where it's not always the case, but a lot of times, it's no cost. So there's enough economic benefit on the mover's side to have the house, that they'll move it at low or no cost. And so on those kind of cases, we would bid that out to have people come to their proposal, and they may come in with a $0.00 bid or a penny bid.
Right. You hope. I mean, we were hoping to move that house that was in front of the rec center, and it ended up costing us to demolish it.
Yeah.
So just the worst-case scenario is we're paying to abate the asbestos and demolish it. Best-case scenario, we pay to take care of the asbestos, and then it's a wash on, someone moves it for free.
Exactly. Yep.
So we would still have to do the asbestos abatement?
Yep.
Even if it's sold?
Yeah, so we, and it's not really, we can't really sell the house because they can't move it without the abatement first. And so what we don't want is something that we're involved with that gets moved, and our local movers are reputable, this wouldn't happen, but, you know, say somebody came in with a low-ball bid or something and moved a house, and then all decided, oh, I want to demolish it, now the asbestos spread all over, and we were somehow involved with that. The liabilities are pretty large. So we want to make sure that before we do anything that we're, you know, over contractually, that it's safe to move and meets all applicable standards because, you know, a lot of times, asbestos, if it's not touched, they don't have to do anything with it. But when you do move, things crack and the, if everything goes perfect, you might not need, might not have an issue, but we just don't take that risk. And so we make sure to abate anything we move before we touch it.
So basically, what we're doing is we're spending plus or minus $300,000 for a house and a right-of-way, right?
$240,000, I think, combined.
Plus whatever it costs for abatement. That could be maybe $50,000.
Abatement on the last one was about $15,000. So it depends, you don't know until you get in there.
Yep, because this is a whole house and...
$15,000 to $30,000, I think. I wouldn't expect it to come in above $30,000. And then I would expect, again, from the preliminary discussions with the mover, it's a great candidate, so I would expect that to come in at $0.
And then we're putting in the curb, gutter, and sidewalk, or the developer doing that?
For, for the roundabout and the back-of-the-road would be curb, gutter, and sidewalk for the street projects, the public rights-of-way.
Okay.
Nothing proposed here for an economic incentive on the interior lots. Not to say they may not come in the future if they ever, you know, say Costco wanted to go on the one-acre lot, they're just kidding, they want to go on a one-acre lot. Maybe Chick-fil-A would or something, something the community really wants. The, you know, they could, that may be a separate economic incentive, but that would be separate from this deal. There's nothing committed in this deal.
Okay.
Okay. I don't see any other questions, so I will accept any public comment on this agenda item. If there's anyone in the public who wishes to comment, great, please come forward, state your name and your street subdivision or neighborhood.
Lori Webb, 1140 Roselle Lane. So I'm here for something else, but this is interesting. So I use this road every day. So my question is, is when this roundabout goes in and that stoplight is there, how many cars, when that stoplight is red, backs up to that roundabout? Because you only have like a block, maybe a block and a quarter, and if you have a red light in your roundabout, how is, how is the traffic going to flow? And if you also already are having more housing and businesses, that's just, that's just a question that I do that light because I don't take the, I don't take the shortcut.
Right.
Because it's not really short, so.
Thank you very much. That's the kind of stuff that traffic engineers live for. We appreciate your comment.
I'd be interested in some kind of hearing, what would be the fix for that?
Yeah, so if that's Counsel, a member, Lori, would like to know the answer to that.
Certainly. So yeah, definitely take it into account, and that's the challenge of this area is Woodgate was so tight up to Townsend. Initially, we were looking to realign Woodgate to come out behind US Bank, and it quickly became very apparent in the studies that that stacking distance behind the light becomes an issue. So that's what drove, we got the Woodgate realignment as far east as possible without, you know, demolishing houses and getting into topography constraints, and we had to leave those lower lots usable. So two things that kind of played towards that. We are working on expansion of the East Oak Grove and Townsend intersection capacity, so especially on the western side there where it's BLM property, so no promises on the timeline there, given that we're have to acquire some land from the federal government. But we are looking to improve the overall capacity of that intersection as a standalone city project.
Meaning like a left turn, a right turn, and a straight? Like when you say expand the capacity?
Getting rid of the offset, getting dedicated right-turn lanes, fixing the drainage, all of those things. So that's in the works. So as, you know, traffic volumes continue to grow, these things take a while, the, hopefully, you know, those are hitting the finish line at the same time. But second to that, if we have queues, and, you know, traffic is growing everywhere, so we keep working to have alternate routes to keep the traffic off of these intersections and give people other ways to go. So that's like 6,700 extension, it'll go through the bridges, so you'll have alternate routes to get all the way down to Townsend, which would take some pressure off of here because some of these are resulting from Hillcrest. So we want to try and keep the whole traffic system porous enough and working on those alternate routes to keep, to where you don't get one single intersection too overly loaded. Having said, worst case, you know, you max out the capacity of that intersection. It is not the end of the world if it does back up to a roundabout. The roundabout just stops until the intersection queue frees up. Good example is Glenwood, that new reconfiguration they did there, about every cycle of that light, the, just because of space constraints. That was the big CDOT project. The queues behind the signal do back up into the roundabout, and then they just do the signal timing such that it works so that you give priority, some of those, to drain so that you can restore that flow to the roundabout. So the overall average delay isn't too large. It's manageable, and we have a, you know, I was pleased with how this ended up. We have a decent amount of storage, especially with, you know, when those intersection capacity improvements take place, that I wouldn't expect it to back up that far. And even at higher volumes, the modeling shows it wouldn't back up that far for the foreseeable future, you know, 20-plus years out. So never say never, but that's what the best, or from everything we can tell, that's how it should operate. Great question.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other public comment, so I would entertain a motion. There's only two of you, so somebody has to do it.
I'll make a motion to approve the Woodgate East Oak Grove Development, am I on the right one?
Uh huh.
Development Agreement to include the purchase of the right-of-way easement and residential structure at a cost of $240,500 is presented.
Second.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And can someone, there we go, he was, he was looking. Well, look at that. We've, that did not pass 7-0. I believe that passed 3-0. And maybe we have multiple windows open or something? Why do you think, do you have any ideas, is there anything we can do on this end to make that look different?
No idea.
No idea? Okay, fair enough. That passes 3-0 for councilors who voted on that, and that allows us to move on to Resolution 2023-10. This is Council consideration of a resolution setting September 5th, 2023, as the hearing date for the Palente addition, annexation, and Planner William Reese will tell us more.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, and members of the public. I do have a brief presentation to share. I will just quickly share my screen here, if I can get this to work.
Maybe it's just the whole planning department that can't.
It is.
Can't.
Apologies for that. She's taking a while. So you may recall that we initially brought the...
Brought, 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 brought.
Wow, wow, wow. Just, 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 just. Wow, 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 wow,
I did fix these maps in light of the completion of the county's road dedication process, so the boundaries shown on these maps do match what will actually be annexed should this be approved. The applicant is requesting MHR manufactured housing residential district to match the zoning of all of the surrounding properties, which allows for single-family homes, whether that be stick-built or manufactured homes. This annexation map shows the property to be annexed and shows that the property is surrounded by three sides by the existing city limits. Our land use chapter in our comprehensive plan suggests that the area is appropriate for employment centers, which indicates that the area would be appropriate for the development of light industrial uses, offices, or business parks, or secondary uses such as hotels, restaurants, or shopping. However, given the small area of the parcel and the surrounding residential uses, the applicant's request for residential zoning is appropriate. Our growth area map does designate as Growth Area 1, which indicates the most cost-efficient areas for the city to annex and grow. As you know, tonight you are strictly voting on the resolution which would set the official hearing date. City Council does not vote on any of the specific details of the application until that date. We are recommending a hearing date of September 5th, which will comply with the state's mandatory timelines for annexation hearings, and we are recommending approval of this resolution. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions from council on setting this hearing date? Any public comment on setting a hearing date? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, I move to adopt Resolution 2023-10 as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a first and a second. Oh, I think we got voting results. They flashed really quickly. Maybe. There we go. Four zero, and the system is working, so that passes unanimously. We'll move on next to Item 11 on our agenda. This is the Dry Cedar Creek 2 addition annexation. Council will hold a hearing on the annexation of the Dry Cedar Creek 2 addition. This is a multi-step one, I believe. William Reese, our planner, is going to take us through it, but there is a resolution and an ordinance. He will go over both of them in one presentation, and then we break them into two sections. Each section will have its own vote and its own comment period.
Yes, thank you. Obviously, this application is the hearing date for the Dry Cedar Creek 2 annexation. So to quickly review the schedule, we did bring this to Planning Commission for a zoning recommendation on June 28th. They did unanimously vote to recommend approval of the applicant's request for the R3A zoning designation. More on that in a bit. Tonight serves as the official hearing, but this will also be required to come back for a second reading on August 1st. This proposed annexation is approximately 5.06 acres in size and is within the city's urban growth boundary and water and sewer service area, and it does meet the state's contiguity requirements. The property is bordered by existing city limits to the west, which is zoned as R3A medium-high-density district and a small corner of R2 low-density district. The applicant has requested R3A due to the continued urbanization of this area of town, considering the commercial and residential development that has occurred just to the west of this area. R3A is intended to provide an area suitable for single-family homes, duplexes, and multifamily residences with intermediate overall density. This annexation plat shows the exact property boundaries of the proposed annexation as well as the contiguity to existing city limits. The property just to the west is in city limits, and then Ogden Road, which is to the north, the road itself is in city limits, although the property on the other side is not. As mentioned, this property does meet the 1/6 contiguity requirement that the state sets forth for annexations. Our land use chapter of the comprehensive plan does show this as residential mixed density low, which is primarily for single-family homes as well as small amounts of attached residential dwelling units such as duplexes or townhomes. Our comprehensive plan also lays out some goals for housing development in Montrose. Within our, within our land use chapter, Goal 5 dictates that we should strive to promote higher-density infill and redevelopment of underutilized sites such as we have here, and support development in areas that can be easily accessed by foot, bike, and/or public transit. As you know, the rec center is just to the west, and there are recreational and bike paths available there and in the vicinity. Within our Housing and Neighborhood Chapter, the plan suggests the encouragement of a variety of housing types, tenure, and density in order to meet the needs of the community, as well as increased access to affordable housing in a mix of price ranges, providing choices for residents of all incomes and ages. This area is also within Growth Area 1, which primarily consists of enclaves within existing city limits, which are appropriate for infill development and represents the most cost-efficient areas to develop residential and/or commercial properties. In summary, the, the application meets all requirements per state and city annexation policy. The Montrose Planning Commission did meet on June 28th, 2023, and made a unanimous vote to recommend the applicant's request of the R3A zoning designation. The applicant has signed an annexation agreement, and staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare and the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 2023-11, Ordinance 2631, and Ordinance 2632. And if there are any questions, I am happy to answer.
Thank you. Council, do we have any questions about the Dry Cedar Creek 2? Okay. Then for the resolution portion of our voting, I will accept public comment. This is the resolution, which is the findings of fact for the Dry Cedar Creek 2 addition. There are no public comments, so I would consider a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-11 as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. And that passes unanimously, which allows us to move on to the second part, which is Ordinance 2631. And this is the ordinance on first reading for the annexation. And I will hold a hearing on this. The hearing is open. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2631 on first reading as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. And that passes unanimously four zero. We move on then to Item 12, which is Ordinance 2632. And this is consideration of the ordinance on first reading, which would provide for the zoning of the Dry Cedar Creek 2 addition as an R3A medium-high-density district. This is in keeping with the same project we just talked about, but would accept any public comment relative to the ordinance that provides the zoning. I don't see any public comment, so would accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to pass Ordinance Number 2632 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. And that passes unanimously four zero. And now we will continue on. We have Items 13, 14, and 15. Mayor Pro Tim Reed is going to recuse himself on these items and step outside. We'll call you back in when we are finished. Number 13 is Woods Crossing North amended preliminary plat. This is council consideration of the Woods Crossing North amended preliminary plat, and I will turn it back over to Planner William Reese.
Thank you again. Once again, I have a brief presentation to share. So the Woods Crossing North amended preliminary plat is in regards to a proposed subdivision located in eastern Montrose on the north side of Sunnyside Road and also adjacent to Miami Road and 6720 Road. The total project site is approximately 160.71 acres in size, and is zoned as R3 medium-density district and B4 neighborhood shopping district with some conditions. All of the proposed lots within this application fall within the R3 portion of what is currently two properties. This plat proposes 263 residential lots, where the previous preliminary plat for this property proposed 287. There is also a 5.42 acre dedicated public park, which remains the same from the previous plat application. This area was initially annexed and zoned in 2017. This subdivision did recently come before City Council at the preliminary plat stage. The Woods Crossing North subdivision preliminary plat was approved by City Council on October 4th, 2022. Due to the proposed amendments, this is appearing before you again for reapproval. It is worth noting that the previous preliminary plat is still within the five-year approval timeline, so hypothetically, if this amendment is not approved, the previous preliminary plat would still be valid, although we are recommending approval tonight. When reviewing subdivision applications, we do have a list of criteria that we take into consideration. These also would have been reviewed during the previous preliminary plat application, and we find that the reduction of lots does not negatively impact these criteria. These include conformance with the master plan and zoning regulations, relationship of the development to topography, soils, drainage, flooding, et cetera, availability of water, sewer, stormwater, drainage, et cetera, compatibility with the natural environment, wildlife, and vegetation, adjacent streets and traffic flow, including pedestrian access, availability of fire, police, and other emergency services, and impacts on area schools. According to the future land use map, this area is designated as residential mixed density medium and neighborhood center, so the proposed lots are all within the residential mixed density medium designation. The majority of this designation are in areas that are not yet developed and provides for a variety of residential types mixed within a neighborhood, including single-family homes, townhomes, duplexes, and triplexes. The proposed subdivision is within the R3 zoning district, which provides an area suitable for single-family homes and duplexes, as well as other compatible uses. The surrounding areas are zoned R1 very-low-density district, R1A large estate district, R2 low-density district, R3A medium-high-density district, and areas outside of city limits. These are the dimensional requirements for lots within the R3 zoning districts. All buildings within the subdivision will need to comply with the setback requirements. And then here is the plat itself. For interested members of the public, this is also available in tonight's meeting packet through our public meetings portal. This first page mainly consists of the standard notes and certificates. The second page here has more of these notes, as well as the exhibits of the easements and site triangles within the subdivision. And then this third page shows the actual subdivision itself. This is mostly the same as the previously approved preliminary plat, with the major change being 7.14 acre lot in the southeast corner, which reduces the overall number of residential lots. And then this fourth page shows the outlots to the north, which are being reserved for future development, but also the proposed extension of Hill Street to connect to Miami Road. And then Page 5 shows some of the lines and curve data. And finally, this last page shows the proposed phasing plan, giving a bit of an idea of the timeline of how the subdivision would eventually be built out. In summary, staff finds that this application is in order and compliant with city subdivision regulations and zoning. Staff recommends the standard conditional approval of the Woods Crossing North amended preliminary plat. And if there are any questions, myself and I think Scott would be happy to answer.
I guess my concern again has always been public safety, and we're looking at 253 units, possibly more, with probably around five or 550 cars traveling up and down both of these roads, along with what's currently coming down from 6700 Road down to Sunnyside or across now to Miami. And I guess, I keep hearing this adverse, it's not adverse to public safety. Now, I don't understand how it, it can or cannot be adverse to public safety when there's not a real study done as to indicate, hey, yeah, Hillcrest, Sunnyside, all these streets will accommodate this particular traffic and safety issue, sidewalks and, and stuff. Because there are no sidewalks on, on that part of Sunnyside or on, what is it, Miami?
Correct. Yep, yep. Do you have the phasing plan in your presentation by chance? Awesome. So, you know, this one's a little different than annexation. So like at an annexation stage, they don't have those studies in place yet. Once they get to the preliminary plat stage, they do. So the original traffic studies for this area were actually when, so this is just amending that area that's shown with the three bubble there. It used to have more lots, so the density is getting lower, but we still relied on the original traffic studies, which had a higher density. In those, they evaluate the intersection capacities. This one had like 12 different intersections because it fanned out all the way to the Highway 50 down to Niagara Hillcrest and identified street capacity or intersection capacity issues. This was actually, when this one first came in, combined with Woods Crossing South, was kind of the straw that broke the camel's back to really push Niagara Hillcrest up to the top of the list for its next, as the next major capital project. Because these areas, you know, it's quite a ways away, but the way the traffic funnels does end up adding more volume to those. We did account for all of this volume in the design of 6700 and all of its intersections. You know, Sunnyside, Miami, those are old farm-to-market routes. They're narrow, two-lane roads that are still functioning and still have a reasonable capacity for vehicles, but don't have those pedestrian accommodations, like you mentioned. So that was part of the negotiations with this, and you'll see some of the language on here. So kind of with the first phases of development, so they may parse off that lot just to sell it. But when that, either that develops or you start developing the subdivision itself, they are obligated to extend the sidewalk connection on the north side of Sunnyside. They're going to widen 6720 to accommodate new ramps to get a crossing there at 6720, and then get down and across to the existing pedestrian pathway on the south side of Sunnyside, kind of down in front of Celebrate Church and all of that there. So to accommodate that immediate need, which is the pedestrian connectivity, volume-wise, the street can handle it for the foreseeable, but once they kind of hit a certain threshold, it gets to where that starts rising to the surface on the city's capital plans, too. East Oak Grove is a good example, behind Walgreens, so, and that was done almost 10 years ago now, but, you know, like the bridges went in initially without that, and then once they hit a certain volume threshold, it really, and other development occurs around there, it starts bringing those to the surface. If that makes sense.
And then also sewer and water, is the capacity there already, or is the city going to have to, to pay for that to promote the developers' growth?
So everything proposed here, the existing system has adequate capacity. So we actually had them change the routing of their sewer basins to make sure that was the case. They're are upsizing some of the stuff in Sunnyside as part of their project, but are relaying some of it. But yeah, it's good for water, sewer. We, we go through water, sewer, storm drainage, traffic. All those various elements are viewed pretty thoroughly. We go multiple iterations to kind of get to the end product.
And that's at the time of preliminary plat, right?
So that's done. That's, that was completed.
Okay, now, I have one more question concerning Hillcrest and 12th Street, being that, that 12th Street and, and Hillcrest both have schools in the general vicinity, and I was concerned about the traffic that's, that's going there. Currently, I travel up and downhill Crest quite a bit, and, and sometimes around between three and six, it's like backed up. And then with 6700 Road right now being closed, 6700 Road used to have a lot of traffic coming off of, or I mean, Sunnyside used to have a lot of traffic coming off of 6700 Road. And, and I guess my concern, though, is when you keep on adding these higher densities that weren't originally approved for those areas, that are we creating blocks in traffic for the, the current residents?
Certainly. Yep, and that's a good point. And that's, that's a great point for the, you know, kind of what I was speaking to earlier, the overall comp plan and overall transportation network. So what we don't want to do is keep adding housing and development further out east and funnel it all back to the west, funnel it all down to Townsend, or funnel it all specifically to Hillcrest and those areas that, yeah, don't have the capacity for it. So as, as development keeps going out, that's where the comp plan comes in to make sure that those rights-of-way are reserved and those corridors are preserved. So 6700 is a good example. So the 6700 extension, and then 6700 will extend between East Oak Grove, down through the bridges, down to Bridges Drive. You know, 16700 is a viable belt route that creates, or takes a lot of pressure off of the Hillcrest, which by extension, the South 12th Corridor. School drop-off is always going to be a zoo. There's, it's really hard to design for that, you know, core 20 to 30-minute loading. But, you know, beyond that, we want to make sure that as growth and development are occurring, there's alternate routes so that they can disperse and kind of think of, you know, porosity through the system of vehicles to not all concentrate onto one. So that kind of drives some of these other bigger projects we're doing to stay ahead of that.
Thanks.
Helps answer that.
Thank you.
Lot arm waving there.
So this is an amended preliminary plat, because like I believe you said, there is already a preliminary plat that should we not approve this would still be a viable plan. And the difference is that corner, what's indicated on here is, is Lot 3, I don't know if you call it a lot, but that area 3. Do we, the developer is just retaining that and not wanting to build homes on that piece of his land? Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, that is, that is our understanding.
Okay, so there's less houses overall, but also less land overall. They're just, he's saying, I mean, is that where the park is going, or is he retaining that for commercial development, or do we, does that not matter in our decision?
So ultimately, it doesn't matter in the decision. Legally speaking, anything that is, in theory, a use-by-ride within the R3 zoning district can be built there. If it's something that requires a conditional use permit, that would obviously require to go back before the Planning Commission. There's no legal reason that this, there couldn't just be one single-family home on that lot.
Okay.
Or he could put a, a neighborhood commercial, or what do they call it? A small.
It's zone residential.
It's, it's zoned R3, which is primarily for residential purposes, a few compatible uses as well. So for example, a, a school is a conditional use. I believe a place of worship might be a conditional use, if I remember correctly. But however, the commercial uses wouldn't be allowed in here with the exception of like, such as an Airbnb, for example.
Okay. Okay.
So it's not a use-by-ride commercial. He'd have to come back in and apply for a rezone on that.
Correct.
Okay.
Which would require more hearings. It would require us bringing a rezone to you as an ordinance.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions from council before we take public comment? Okay, then I would say this is an opportunity for public comment on this agenda item. Come on forward. Please restate your name, neighborhood, subdivision, or street.
Lori Webb, 1140 Rosell Lane, Montrose, Colorado, 81401. Okay, so I live right on the corner of 6720 and.
Sunnyside.
Sunnyside, right there at the corner. Okay, so in the newspaper, well, I wasn't here for the count, for Planning Commission meeting, but in the paper just the other day, it was stated that that corner that he was going to use for the Colorado West Christian School, if you read the whole last statement of that. So that's what Planning Commission had said that it was going to be. All right, so that 6720 Road and that corner, you've got, you have a 12-foot ditch there. I mean, it's hard for the school buses, even on Miami and 6720. I mean, it's hard for the school buses even on Miami and 6720 Road. I just want to see the infrastructure done first before these developers can go in and just do it. Last year, we were here at the same thing, and I asked about all of the, with the woods crossing, just regular woods crossing, but all the traffic for 200 and some homes that's going in already to the south and to the east. And it's like, we always have to have this bottleneck of cars. So now, if there's going to be another school on that corner, which is Colorado West, and that's supposed to be a junior high and a high school, I do believe, because they're already adding on to Colorado West already, this school, you already have the Catholic school. So right now, within three blocks, you pretty, or five blocks, you already have three schools. You, thank you for extending 6720 after 40-some years, or 6700 for 40 years now, you know, on the planning thing. Thank you, that's great. I hate going the long way around every day right now, but it is what it is. The retention pond that's out there, it's nothing but a mosquito trap, right now. The hole's dug, but it's standing water. And there's, what's going to happen with that? Who's going to maintain that, right now, even if it gets dug? Turning lanes for the school, if there is going to be a school built. The other thing I don't want to see is I don't want to see the big duplexes. We, in 2017, I was at every single meeting to be able to not to have such super-high density. Also, low lighting, as far as in the nighttime, that sort of thing I'd like to also see. Let's see, what else? And if there's going to be another roundabout, because you already get traffic backed up from 6700 Road to almost Vega Drive. I mean, because everybody's turning left. I mean, it's going to be great, 6700's going through, but I think then you're also going to have to have another roundabout. And I disagree with Sunnyside and Miami just being little tiny baby roads, they need to be extended.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Any additional public comment on the Woods Crossing North amended preliminary plat? Okay, I don't see any, so...
Can I ask Scott a question?
Of course.
Scott, that, she described a retention pond. I drove by there not too long ago, and it looked to me like it was a, about a five- or six-foot deep hole, and they didn't have any fencing around it, and like she said, it had, it was retaining water. I do have some concerns about that now that she brought it up, and, I mean, is there anything that we can recommend? But I know it's probably not part of this, approving this, but...
It's relevant.
I would like to have some information before I vote yes or no.
Certainly, yeah, so the retention pond is certainly relevant to this, because it's infrastructure in support of the preliminary plat. So, yeah, they're definitely, that's a good thing to go over. So, this area is unique, a lot of gravel deposited in the area. The owner of this land has used that on their own, for their own purposes, not a commercial gravel pit, but they've been excavating and crushing the material to use to build the roads, which, you know, generally, as long as the dust is controlled, it's a short-term impact, but it does reduce a lot of the traffic loading on our road, so it's generally a net positive for the community. We have to live with it during the crushing, but, so they, this unique area in that you have the ability to infiltrate to some degree, it's not, still have lower permeability soils, but typically, these subdivisions would discharge into a ditch or drain. This area, whole area is bisected by the H Drain, which is a Bureau of Reclamation drain.
Right.
That ultimately goes in, behind your house, yeah, ultimately goes into the Lutzenheiser Canal, so the Bureau of Reclamation said, there's no discharges allowed into the H Drain, period. So that's forced the developer, there's really no other choice, but to go into an infiltration design that relies on the infiltration. So what they've done out there now...
Does that, I'm sorry to interrupt, but does that mean he can't, the developer who owns that and is taking gravel out, so there's water there, can't route that into a canal system, the Bureau of Rec owns that and says, no, so he just has to wait for it to soak in? Is that what you said?
Yeah, but the water that's there now is groundwater, so ultimately for their final design...
So it's not going to soak in?
Yep, so they, ultimately for their final design, yeah, that's the base groundwater level that they exposed. But ultimately, for their final design, they have to, yeah, accommodate the stormwater and can't discharge the stormwater that runs off of the development into the, into the H Drain, or the AMK Lateral up north. So their design, what they've done now is they mine, they overmine, because they had good gravel that was good for their crushing, and are eventually going to backfill that to bring it back up to the upper level.
Okay, and so it wouldn't be constantly holding water when they fill it back in, but it would be available for stormwater containment?
That's the design, yep, but those things, there's some degree of uncertainty there, so to make sure the city is protected, we've actually, and we did this on another development that had a similar thing recently, enter into agreements that say, they, ultimately, they're responsible for its performance to make sure that it's not a mosquito breeding ground. So, right now, we don't have any, a lot of control over it, it's just a private landowner digging a hole on private property. So right now, there's not a lot of recourse, and it's not, things being accepted, they aren't doing any subdivision work yet. They're just, they know this is where the pond is going to be, they need gravel, so they're kind of getting a twofer in the interim. But, so when they do come to build that pond, a lot of that excavation is complete. But the final design is perched up large, higher, well above the water table, and is designed to infiltrate, and then if it doesn't infiltrate through those agreements, and one of them's already been recorded, they have to expand or modify their pond, give additional infrastructure and accommodations to make sure that it does. So, that second degree of protection is there, just because this is a unique situation that usually there's a ditch that they can discharge into, and it's a detention pond, not a retention pond. But, yeah, the goal is the same, no ponded water, no exposed groundwater, that that's, the final pond level of that will be backfilled several feet above where it is now.
So we'll actually have more control and regulation over it once the subdivision starts than we do currently?
Absolutely, yep, yep, because they won't, can't get a final plat without all of that being worked out. And it's definitely on our radar.
Okay, and then once we approve it, then it's possibility of, because it's a pretty deep hole, at least what I saw.
It is, yeah, yeah, yep. We've been in communication with, we saw the same things, too, like, what are you doing here?
Okay. Any other questions specifically about that? Okay, any other questions? And if not, we would have a motion on the prelim, on the amended preliminary plat.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wood Crossing North amended preliminary plat expressly conditioned upon the city staff, ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately address all of staff's concerns prior to execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all conditions being satisfied.
Do we have a second?
Well, I guess, being that I have a lot of confidence in the city engineer, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a first and a second, please vote. Make sure you hit save after your vote. That passes 3-0, and we move on to the Woods Crossing filing number two, final plat. William Reese. Oh, I guess I usually read something. Consideration the Woods Crossing number two final plat to create one lot, one stormwater tract, and associated rights of way and easements. Mr. Reese.
Thank you again. So first of all, to clear up any potential confusion here, the Woods Crossing subdivision and the Woods Crossing North subdivision are separate subdivisions with separate geographic locations, though they are next to each other. Woods Crossing is located south of Sunnyside Road, and this is, again, separate from the Woods Crossing North preliminary plat that you just heard. This is a final plat application that would create one new lot and one stormwater tract. The entire site is approximately 35.325 acres in size and is the unbuilt portion of the Woods Crossing subdivision on either side of Hill Street. East of Hill Street is zoned R2 low-density district, and west of Hill is R3A medium-high-density district. This did pretty recently go through an amended preliminary plat, which was approved by city council in May of this year. As this is a final plat, this is the final step in order to formally create lot lines and individually conveyable properties. All lots need to meet the minimum lot size in the underlying zoning district, which is met here. Streets must be in place and approved by the city engineer, and utilities, water, sewer, et cetera, must be installed. Showing the plat itself, again, this first page is mostly plat notes and signature lines that are pretty standard for final plats, and then the second page shows the proposed lots. As mentioned, one stormwater tract in the northwestern portion of the subdivision, and then right along Hill and Sunnyside, they're proposing a large 9.15 acre lot. The remainder is reserved as outlots for future development. This final plat application is in compliance with the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan, and meets the intent of the R2 and R3A zoning districts. Staff recommends the standard conditional approval of the Woods Crossing subdivision filing number two final plat. And once again, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council members? Okay, I would...
So, we're looking at, what, three lots?
One lot, one stormwater tract, and then, I suppose, two outlots reserved for future development.
Okay, and this is the final plat on that?
Correct.
So, if they want to do residential lots on it, they'll have to come back with another plat, right?
Correct. That is the intent, as I understand from the developer, the intent of the outlots. As shown in the, when we brought the amended preliminary plat in front of city council, that did show the proposed residential lots that presumably will eventually come before you as a final plat again. I suppose there's no guarantee of that, but we assume that that will happen in the future.
Is there any public comment on the Woods Crossing filing number two final plat? Seeing none, I would ask one of you to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wood Crossing final, filing number two final plat expressly conditioned upon city staff, ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and the applicant adequately address all of staff's concerns prior to execution of the final plat. City staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat until all conditions are met.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
And that passes 3-0. We have one more before we get Mr. Reed back in here, and we'll move on to item 15, which is the Bear Creek subdivision filing number eight final plat. This is council's consideration of the Bear Creek subdivision filing number eight final plat to create 37 residential lots, open space tracts, outlots reserved for future development, and associated rights of way and easements. Planner, William Reese.
Thank you again. So the Bear Creek subdivision is located in northern Montrose, east of 6350 Road and south of Lincoln Road. This is filing number eight within the Bear Creek subdivision, which it is worth noting here that rather than a straight zone like the last final plat, this area is subject to a plan development, which is the Bear Creek PD Plan that has been approved. The site is approximately 53.36 acres, and the applicant is proposing 37 single-family residential lots located within R3A medium-high-density and R5 low-density and manufactured housing district. The Bear Creek amended preliminary plat was approved in September of 2021. All lots do need to meet the minimum lot size as designed within the Bear Creek PD Plan, which they do. Just like the last final plat, all streets must be in place and approved by the city engineer, and utilities, water, sewer, et cetera, must be installed prior to execution. As far as the actual plat itself, the first page, as always, shows the plat notes, but also includes some detail regarding the PD Plan, showing that some of the dimensional standards are slightly different, but this is consistent with the rest of the Bear Creek subdivision. And then this page shows the proposed lots with this filing, as well as some of the outlots that are reserved for future development. These proposed rights of way would be dedicated to the city as necessary for frontage and access for each lot. So this final plat is in compliance with our regulations and the approved Bear Creek Plan Development. Staff recommends the standard conditional approval of the Bear Creek subdivision filing number eight final plat. Once again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, any questions?
Is water and sewer provided by the city Montrose for this area, or is that Tri County?
I'll just relay, city sewer and Tri County water. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, any public comment on the Bear Creek subdivision filing number eight final plat? Seeing none, I'm going to ask one of you again to read these long motions.
I'll make a motion to approve the Bear Creek subdivision filing number eight...
Hang on, it's on the other page. Can I help you?
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll get on the right page. To approve the Bear Creek subdivision filing number eight final plat expressly conditioned upon the city staff, ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met, and that the applicant adequately address all of staff's concerns prior to execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized to prove or to execute the final plat until all the conditions are met and satisfied.
Second.
Thank you, we have a first and a second, please vote. Chief Hall, will you get Mayor Protim Reed back? And that passes 3-0, and we will move on to item 16. Ordinance 2633 on first reading. This is an ordinance designating the Methodist Episcopal Church of Montrose at 19 South Park Avenue, Montrose, Colorado, as a city of Montrose historic property pursuant to Section 11-3 of the official code of the city of Montrose. Mr. Reese?
Thank you again. My last presentation for tonight, and I know Paul has been very patient back there. We're very excited to bring this historical designation in front of you tonight. The first thing that you might notice is that the ordinance and packet refers to this building as the Methodist Episcopal Church of Montrose, which is slightly different from the existing building. You might notice the signs out there say First United Methodist Church of Montrose. The former name is the name that is used throughout the national and state historic information for the building. So in order to remain consistent, we are using the name Methodist Episcopal Church of Montrose for this designation. This is already recognized on both the national and the state historic registers, so we feel that this is something that obviously easily meets the criteria for a local designation. It does need to be at least 50 years old, which it easily is, and we are saying that this is eligible due to criteria A, B, and C. The building is significant for its association with the religious history of Montrose, having remained a church ever since it was completed in 1920. The building was designed by the architect Thomas Barber, who was a notable architect throughout Colorado and California. Many of those buildings that he designed are recognized on the National Historic Register. And the building is significant for its Romanesque revival-style architecture and its conformance with the Akron Plan style of church design, which was a design intended to facilitate Sunday school classes. The Methodist Episcopal Church of Montrose originates way back to when Montrose was first incorporated in 1882 with the organization of a Methodist Sunday School, which originally met in a carpenter shop. This shop was eventually purchased for $500 in 1883 and was used as the church, as well as the first public school in Montrose. Later in 1886, a church building would be completed, which can be seen here. This picture was taken in 1887, and this is, this was on the corner of North Second and Cascade. This building was... on the corner of North Second and Cascade. This building was never very structurally sound due to soil instability, and it was eventually condemned and torn down in 1906. Church members purchased lots in 1909 at South First Street and Park Avenue and directed the architect Thomas Barber to design a building that would be suitable for a town of 25,000 people. In the meantime, services were held in the local Masonic Hall until the church's basement was built. This map here is the 1912 sandborne fire insurance map. The building footprint can clearly be seen, but you might notice it is not marked as the brick exterior that it has today, since at this time only the stone foundations were in existence. With the outbreak and the U.S. involvement in World War I, construction did need to stop, and the basement was roofed and used as the church during the war. Towards the end of the war in 1917, when funds and labor became more readily available, construction resumed, and the building was completed in 1920. This map is from 1919, so not quite when the building was finished, but very close. As you can see, the color has changed. The sandborne maps do indicate the building's materials, so this red coloring shows the brick construction. And here are some historical photographs of the church. This one was labeled as being from the 1920s. This is a pretty good picture that highlights a lot of the distinctive architectural characteristics, and also a good view of the church before some of the present-day trees make it harder to take a picture. This picture is also from the 1920s and shows the children from the Sunday school classes posing in front. As mentioned, the church's interior design was built with this Sunday school instruction in mind, and this picture is labeled from the 1940s. You can somewhat see that the church's architecture has largely remained intact. One major modification on this side of the building were the alterations in the name of ADA accessibility, so you don't see the ramp that is there today in this picture. Moving into some more modern photos, this is the Park Avenue side of the building. As I'm sure you can tell, there's a lot of identifying historical features of the building, so I might not get into all of them. However, of particular note, the tan-colored stone, the sandstone, sandstone trim, the dome, octagonal roof visible at the top, the bell tower at the corner is also very typical of Akron-style church construction. Also note the semicircular arched top entrances and windows. Looking a bit closer at the bell tower, you can see some of the brickwork a little bit better, especially the parapet on the corner towers. Also note the wood louvers filling in the arched openings. And then, this photograph shows the rear of the building, where you can see some of the stained glass windows, including the circular window on the left of this picture. You can also see how these first three sides all have the same gable structure emanating from the domed roof, and you can also see a bit better on this side, the stone construction that made up the original basement space that was used during World War I. One thing to note, on the left of here, there is an addition that was completed in 1991. This is not being considered for historical designation, as it's obviously less than the 50-year-old requirement. And then, on this final side, we can see more of the stained glass windows, which are, do have these brick sills and transoms, which are very similar to the other brick structures of the same time period throughout Montrose. In summary, staff finds that this application meets the eligibility criteria for historical designation. We are recommending approval of ordinance 2633 on first reading. If there are any questions, I can try my best to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council for Mr. Reese?
I just wanted to point out, Mayor, I did not work on this construction.
[laughing] You had retired by then. It doesn't look like we have any questions, but how about public comment? Okay, I was going to say you've sat all evening, but we're, thank you for coming tonight. So, there is no public comment, so I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2633 on first reading as presented.
Second.
And that passes unanimously. Congratulations on your historic designation. Okay, next on our agenda is item 17, staff reports. First one on the agenda for staff reports is a sales use and excise tax report from Finance Director Shani Wittenberg.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Sorry about that. So, let me see if I can There we go. It needed to refresh, apparently. Okay, so, share my screen with you. This is the sales use and excise tax collection report for May of 2023 compared to the same time period in 2022. General Fund sales and use taxes collected at 3%. May sales and use tax compared to May of 2022 for the general fund, retail sales tax is up 7.2%. Construction use tax down 74%. Use and auto use tax up 47.3%, with total collections up 0.8%. Budget variance positive of 11.7%. Year-to-date sales and use tax compared to the same time period in 2022, retail sales tax is up 8.5% or approximately $742,000. Construction use tax is down almost 70% or $407,000. Use and auto use tax is up 2.6% or $16,000, with total collections up 3.5% or approximately $351,000. Budget variance here is also positive year-to-date, or we over, or we under-budgeted our revenues by $1.2 million. We always budget conservatively so as not to run into an issue, since sales and use tax is our main form of revenue in the general fund. Public Safety Sales and Use Tax, we began collecting 0.58% in January of 2020. May sales, sales and use tax compared to May of 2022 for the Public Safety Fund, retail sales tax up 7%. Construction use tax down 36.7%. Use and auto use tax up 47.3%, with total collections up 3.8%. The budget variance for the month of May is positive 11.3%. Year-to-date sales and use tax compared to year-to-date 2022 for the Public Safety Fund, retail sales tax is up 8.2% or $139,000. Construction use tax down 27.5% or $34,000. Use and auto use tax up 2.6% or $3,000, with total collections up 5.6% or an approximate $108,000. Budget variance here year-to-date is positive of 12.8% or $232,000 more has been collected than we anticipated. Montrose Recreation District, in June of 2014, we began collecting 0.3% for the construction of the new community recreation center. In May, collections for this purpose were $233,767, or up 3.7% compared to May of 2022. Year-to-date collections are just over $1 million, or 5.5% more than we collected year-to-date in 2022, which equates to $56,000. Excise taxes, the city collects 0.9% for hotel excise tax and 0.8% for restaurant excise tax. This money is used primarily to promote tourism in Montrose. May, compared to May of 2022, hotel excise tax is up 26.6%. Restaurant excise tax is up 2.7%, with total collections up 7.2%, or budget variance of 38.8% positive. Year-to-date hotel excise tax compared to year-to-date in 2022, up 14.4% or $7,000. Restaurant excise tax up 9.5% or $22,000, with total collections up 10.3% or $30,000. Positive budget variance year-to-date of 42.3% or $91,000. It's good to note here that we've been a little bit reluctant with our excise tax projections just because of COVID and tourism and not knowing what's going to happen. But, it seems very positive this year. I don't think we've had a down month. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendors' fees that the businesses voted to give up back in the 1990s. In May, we collected $52,243, or 6.8% more than we did in May of 2022. Year-to-date collections totaled $249,254, 7.6% more than we collected year-to-date in 2022, or $18,000. So, with that, that's the end. So, I'll entertain any questions you may have, or-
Any questions? Thank you for the finance report.
You're welcome.
Next, we, Chief Hall is going to give us a brief police update, announce an upcoming event, and maybe you can tell us, the public, a little bit about this ceremony that was at 5:30 prior to our council meeting, too.
I didn't catch that second part while I was walking up.
Can you tell the public, who may or may not still be listening after 2 hours and 40 minutes, of, about the ceremony that happened at 5:30 today?
You bet.
Because that was cool.
So, we'll start there. I, I had the privilege of promoting two brand-new police sergeants with the Montrose Police Department. They were backfill for promoting two new commanders because we promoted two new deputy police chiefs. So, it's great to have the support from our city administration and our city council to be able to, to put staff in place as we grow and as we try to essentially tackle new things. And so, with that, one of the things that we haven't done actually in a few years that we're getting back to is this August 1st, starting at 5:00 p.m., right in front of the police department, is the National Night Out. And so, the police department will be grilling hot dogs and hamburgers for the community. National Night Out is a one-night event where citizens can come out, meet their neighbors, you know, have a block party or something along those lines if they want, just to get to know the community members in their neighborhood just a little bit better, especially from a crime prevention realm. We, we can't do it by ourselves. We have to have citizens call us when they see crimes that are in their area, and it's very important for you to know your neighbors so that you can build that community. So, we're promoting that from the police department, August 1st, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We've invited all of our local community law enforcement and fire department EMS partners. The fire department will be there, the Montrose Sheriff's Department will be there. We invited Colorado State Patrol, but it sounds like they're participating in one down south. Our local dispatch center and Colorado Parks and Wildlife will all be attending that event that night. So, we're looking forward to it, and we're hoping the community will come out and help celebrate with us in front of our brand-new police department.
Fantastic.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other staff reports that we need to hear? Okay, any council comments? Okay, then, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Someone second it?
Second.
That is approved by acclamation. We adjourn.